Staff respectfully request that you consider the approval and adoption of new Subchapter W consisting of Sections 19.4001 through 19.4018. Staff has received written comments on the proposed rules. Currently, we're reviewing the rule text to evaluate any changes based on those comments. Staff will also evaluate the rule text based upon the comments made at today's and December 20th hearings. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Jamie. Next, I'd like to welcome all the legislators and their staff in attendance today. Thank you very much for coming. I will call on anybody who has submitted cards. So if you'd like to submit a witness card, please make sure you do so, and we'll offer comments for the record. First is Senator Watson. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner and Counsel. I appreciate your scheduling this second public hearing in response to my request for it. There remain a number of questions which TDI has yet to answer, and the people deserve another opportunity to be heard on this important issue. So thank you. First, let me begin by saying I want to be very clear about us avoiding the political straw men, the political straw men in this conversation. Texans support common sense requirements such as criminal background checks for navigators. The bill I authored in the legislative session, SB 1795, allowing for navigator regulations prohibits convicted felons from providing these services. Of course, the state should enforce that provision and protect consumers. We shouldn't have electioneering. My bill expressly prevents that too. And we need to be sure we protect privacy. We are all in agreement that these requirements are paramount in protecting consumers. That's why they were put in the bill. But my bill authorizes TDI to create regulations that protect the state from bad actors without making it harder for navigators to do their jobs. Remember the Purpose Clause of SB 1795. It says, "The purpose of this chapter is to provide a state solution to ensure that Texans are able to find and apply for affordable health coverage under any federally run health benefit exchange while helping consumers in this state." Your goal is to help ensure that Texans are able to find and apply for affordable coverage under the federally run exchange. And of course, I know you remember that those in control of the Capitol have chosen not to have a Texas exchange, creating the need for Senate Bill 1795. The vast majority of healthcare navigators, as you can see and as you've seen from the testimony you received on September 30th, 2013, and most recently on December 20th, are honest folks who are working hard and in good faith to connect their fellow Texans with health insurance. The Texas Department of Insurance has yet to provide justification for why it has gone as far as it has with these rules. On December 20th, I and several other senators submitted a letter to you in which we requested explanations to very specific questions. The people of Texas deserve answers to these questions. They deserve to know why some of these proposed rules are so far reaching. With all due respect, what's very troubling to me is that my office asked when we might expect answers to these questions. We were told that an email you sent on December 23rd was a reply, but that so-called reply reads as an acknowledgement of receiving the letter, not as a response to it. In fact, you seem to suggest that you will answer these questions in the final rule order. Commissioner, that is inappropriate. As I stressed in my September 30th testimony to you, because this issue has been so politicized, people have reason, even an obligation, to be skeptical. So process matters here. Your process, the refusal to answer critical questions prior to the final rule order, leaves no opportunity for the public to discuss fallacies or poor decisions before the rules are final. More importantly, it robs Texans of a transparent, accountable process and avoids a fair debate on the issue. So what are the questions that haven't been answered? Number one, TDI has yet to explain how it arrived at the arbitrary 40-hour training requirement in addition to the 20 to 30 federally required training hours. All we know, the only possible justification that is currently out there, is a demand by the governor. Number two, nor has TDI explained how it arrived at the 13, 13, 14 hours of training in the areas of Texas Medicaid, privacy, and ethics respectively. Number three, TDI has not explained why navigators will have to pay registration fees as well as significant costs associated with additional training in light of (a) the fact that navigators can't charge a fee for their service, and (b) the fiscal note for Senate Bill 1795, based on information provided by TDI, assumes any cost associated with implementation of the bill would be absorbed with existing staff and resources. Number four, TDI has yet to explain how it arrived at the proposed options for proving financial responsibility, which includes surety bonds. Number five, TDI has yet to provide a detailed timeline showing each step that a navigator organization and individual navigators must accomplish to come into compliance with the proposed rule. We also haven't seen a timeframe for which each step can reasonably be completed, an essential question for honest, hard-working Texans who are working right now to connect folks with health insurance. And six, TDI has not explained how extending the registration requirements to almost anyone providing enrollment assistance protects Texas consumers, or how restricting the use of the term navigator outside of the federally operated insurance exchange protects consumers. Under your proposed rules, navigators must comply with many of the rules' requirements by March 1, 2014. Assuming these rules become effective in early February, navigator and navigator organizations will have only about a month to come into compliance. Given that the open enrollment period for people seeking coverage in 2014 ends on March 31st, I fear that many navigator entities will face significant problems in meeting your proposed rules without compromising their ability to help Texans secure health care. I respectfully request that you postpone the compliance deadline until after the open enrollment period ends. And although the training requirements for TDI certified courses are not applicable until May 1, 2014, I question how many companies are going to be able to set up the training and examination requirements precisely as you've laid out in the proposed rules. An open and transparent process shouldn't result in a product that only a certain business or type of business can provide. People have a right to question whether the timing, combined with the extremely expanded training requirement that doesn't seem capable of justification, other than because the governor suggested it, might be to benefit a private provider of training, perhaps one that already has a contract with the state. This would put public money that should be going to help people get health coverage in a private enterprise's hands, again, with no justification. I respectfully request that you delay the implementation of the state training requirements until the universe of potential providers can be better assessed. Commissioner, we still have time to do this right. You still have the opportunity to strike the appropriate balance between two equally important responsibilities, protecting consumers and ensuring Texans have access to the health insurance that's right for them. I urge you to provide answers to the questions raised by the members of the Senate on December 20th, and to do so before you finalize this rule. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Garcia, are you ready?
Thank you. Please forgive me, but I've been suffering from what probably 80% of the people in this room have been suffering from. Nonetheless, I too am here to provide comments on the proposed rules for regulations of navigators. As Senator Watson said, the purpose of navigator legislation, which he sponsored and which I co-sponsored, is to provide a state solution to ensure that Texans are able to find and apply for affordable health care coverage under any federally run health benefit exchange while helping consumers in this state. Navigators and the community-based organizations that have received navigator grants are playing a critical role in helping Texans learn about their different health care options and enroll for coverage. While many of the proposed rules provide important consumer protections and appropriate regulation of navigators, I am very, very concerned that some of the rules that you're proposing create unnecessary and bureaucratic obstacles for navigators to do their job, and this will result in roadblocks to health care coverage for those most in need. I will now go through a couple of specific concerns, and I'll refer to this Section just as 4014, then the subsection 5. Prohibits navigators from providing advice regarding substantive benefits or comparative benefits of different health plans. This rule will prevent navigators from fulfilling their primary responsibility, which is to advise and guide consumers in understanding and comparing benefits so they can make an informed decision. Insurance is complicated. Quite frankly, sometimes it's even complicated for me, and I am one of those people who also happens to be a lawyer. But nonetheless, insurance is very complicated. Consumers need help navigating these options. That is what navigators are intended to do. This is not the same as making a recommendation to a consumer to buy a specific plan. If this rule remains, it essentially strips the primary purpose of having health navigators in the first place. Subsection 1 of 1414 prohibits navigators from engaging in electioneering activities or finance or otherwise supporting the candidacy of an individual for government positions, including campaigning, persuading, promoting, advertising, or coordinating with any political party, committee, or candidate. As mentioned by Senator Watson, I don't have a real problem with partisan politics or for a specific candidate, but I do believe that navigators do need to have the ability to be able to help get voters involved. So I would like to see if you would look at this rule to make it clear that voting engagement is not covered under this section. I believe that voter engagement is a civic responsibility, and I request that TDI make this clarification in the rules. Now with regard to training, it really completely just baffles me that we would add an additional 40 hours on top of the 20 or 30 hours already required by federal law. Frankly, 40 hours is probably, I don't know, Counsel, what is it now for, even for lawyers? For yearly, yearly, it's probably, what, 20, 24 hours? We're expecting folks who are just simply going to help guide and navigate through this, through the ACA process, to do more additional training than even some lawyers do. This is far more trending than any other similar community-based enrollment assistance positions in Texas. The Community Partner Program only requires four to five hours of training. The Health Insurance Advocacy and Counseling Program requires 25 hours of training, and health insurance agents do not require any training. A preliminary analysis by CTP of the ACA navigator training requirements in other states appears to show that the proposed Texas rules will require many more hours than any other state in the nation. Other than Texas, Wisconsin has the highest requirement with 16 hours of state training on top of federal training. This puts the Texas proposed rule to more than twice as many additional state training hours. Additional state-specific education may be necessary above what the federal guidelines require. However, I strongly suggest that TDI look at existing training requirements for other similar community-based enrollment assistance positions and work with HHS, other relevant state agencies, and the navigator entities to develop a more appropriate training and testing that is not duplicative or excessive. Section 4015 limits use of the term navigator unless registered with a department as a navigator entitled an individual navigator. Now navigator is actually a widely-used term that has been in use for various programs even before it was used in the Affordable Care Act. The rule should be amended to clarify that prohibition only applies within the context of health insurance application assistance. My hope would be that if I jump in a car for a road trip and I'm not the driver but the navigator, then hopefully you don't call me in, because again, navigator is a very commonly-used term, and we need to clarify that this is only in context of health insurance application assistance. Furthermore, I'm concerned that the navigator rules are overly broad and may be interpreted to require registration of anyone, family members, neighbors, coworkers, a member of the clergy, even my own legislative staff, who is simply offering personal assistance to another. I ask that this be clarified. Now about the fees. This one really is even more baffling. I don't understand why we even need any fees. The additional fees that will have to be paid by navigator individuals and navigator entities are a huge, huge concern to me and many nonprofits who have contracts or are working on this navigator responsibility, and I would like, frankly, to have these fees eliminated. Navigator entities have received sets of amount of grant money from the federal government to help provide free assistance to the poor and uninsured. I would like to underscore free assistance to the poor and uninsured. They are prohibited from charging this individual any fees for the services they provide. The additional fees, which will range from $320 to $980, are excessive and burdensome. Again, I go back to being a lawyer. Even my bar dues are not $800, $980. At my calculation, the city of Houston, which I represent, with its 16 navigators, will have to spend as much as $14,300 for registrations, fingerprinting, and training. Where will the navigator entities get the additional funding in the next few months to implement these requirements? What I see is that these fees will divert money to TDI from federal grants that are intended to provide services to the poor and uninsured. Furthermore, TDI was not authorized by Senate Bill 1795, sponsored by Senator Watson, to charge these fees. So I wonder, under what authority are you charging these fees? I'm also very concerned that the federal training model includes how to provide culturally and linguistically appropriate services. However, I don't see that TDI has worked on this and that TDI needs to collaborate with HHS to approve the Spanish language training models, which I hear from applicants are not fully functional. I would request that the training and testing be done in Spanish, or in the alternative, I recommend that TDI allow a 50% extension of time on the state exam for those who speak English as a second language. This is an accommodation that HHS allows for the federal exam, and I think it would be appropriate for the state exam also. In fact, I think in some areas of our state, I know I have a pocket in my own district, the exam may be also need to be considered to be in Vietnamese. In fact, I would urge you to look at the guide from the Justice Department on what parts of our state are required to have Spanish language ballots and Vietnamese ballots, and that training and information be made possible in those areas under those languages already assessed by the Justice Department as needing some items in other than in English. I want to underscore the concern of many navigator entities that the evidence of financial responsibility may be excessive or unnecessary. Again, for example, in the case of the city of Houston and other government entities which can self-insure, the requirements in the proposed rules are simply not necessary. I ask that this be clarified. Finally, on this issue, the surety bond requirement and the professional liability requirements, I think, are fairly excessive for the person that really is what this law was intended to contemplate it to be. Navigators should be and will come from communities. They individually cannot afford the surety bond requirements or the professional liability requirements. I think this needs to be looked at again and revised if needed at all. Lastly, the implementation date should be extended under the enrollment, until the enrollment period ends when navigators have time to begin the training and registration process. Under the proposed rules, navigators must comply with most of the requirements by March 1, which is the start of the last month of enrollment. These last three months are a critical time for enrollment activity, and I believe the March 1 implementation date largely serves to slow down and undermine the process of enrolling individuals. These are some of my concerns. Again, I want to take this time to thank you for having the second meeting. I hope that you do listen, and I do hope you make some changes, because I do think that a lot of the rules that I've highlighted really do serve to just stop people from doing the work that this law was intended to do. We should work to strengthen the rules and truly adhere to the intent of the Affordable Care Act and SB 1795. Our ultimate goal here should be to ensure that we allow navigators to do their job responsibly and eliminate our shamefully high insurance rate in Texas. I ask for consideration of these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Representative Howard, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rathgaber, Ms. Walker, Mr. Carter. Thank you for allowing me to offer comments on the proposed rules for health navigators. I'm Donna Howard, and I have the privilege of representing House District 48 here in Travis County. In fact, I probably represent several of you in this room and on the dais. Yes. I also want to thank you for holding today's hearing. As you know, I signed onto a letter with some of my colleagues voicing my concern over the scheduling of the December 20th hearing on this matter. At about the same time that our letter was sent to you, we received notice from the agency that a second hearing had been scheduled to provide an opportunity for comments after the holidays, and I want to thank you for making this additional date an option. I submitted a letter of comments to you by email late last night, and I have a copy of that letter here in case you didn't receive it, so I will keep my comments very brief. We all know that navigators have become somewhat controversial based on their origins in the federal Affordable Care Act. Due to the strong feelings related to Obamacare, it is difficult, and nearly impossible even, to discuss the matter without the interjection of politics, but that is what I would like to do today. I would ask that while you consider these rules and incorporate any stakeholder feedback, you keep in mind the uninsured population of Texas. At present, that population stands at 6 million, leaving our state with the highest rate of uninsured in the nation. Most of us understand that gaining insurance coverage does not in and of itself equal access to care, but I think we can agree that people with coverage are more likely to get the care that they need. And there are numerous Texans that are not getting the care that they need right now. They are skipping a trip to the doctor because they can't afford it. They're not getting preventive care, which will likely cost them a whole lot more in the long run, and it will certainly cost all of us more as our local tax dollars pick up the cost for uncompensated care. Some of the uninsured may have had health coverage before, but they lost it when they lost or changed jobs. Some may never have had health coverage and don't really know the first thing about signing up for it. Navigators are designed to help these individuals in particular get the coverage they need for the price they can afford. With the deadline for open enrollment through the ACA coming on March 31st, we've got a limited amount of time to get people signed up and not be penalized by the health insurance mandate. Most importantly, those who would qualify for subsidies will not be eligible to receive that assistance if they are not signed up by the deadline. That means that those with the greatest need will have to pay full fare or remain uninsured, defeating the whole purpose of expanding access. We're talking about the health and well-being of Texans here, and I don't want that to get lost in this discussion. I voted for Senate Bill 1795 because I support implementing sensible consumer protections and imposing Texas regulations on navigators where the federal regulations fall short. What I do not support are unreasonable costs to our volunteers and nonprofit organizations. I do not support arbitrary training requirements with time demands that have been seemingly picked out of the air, and I do not support continued efforts to stand between our Texas citizens and the health coverage they deserve. I recently helped my daughter with her enrollment through the federal health exchange. Had this occurred after the registration deadline, would I have needed to register as a navigator? Many Texans don't have a mother to walk them through the process, or a tech-savvy sibling to patiently explain the website. Some in rural Texas or impoverished households may not even have internet access. They are why we need these navigators. For that reason, I would ask that you amend the proposed rules to set the navigators up for success rather than drive them toward defeat. I ask you, Commissioner Rathgaber, to be our Goldilocks. Look at the regulations. That's too little. That's too much. Ah, that's just right. Just right to help Texans gain access and provide consumer protections. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Representative Workman.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Paul Workman. I'm a state representative from District 47, western Travis County. You may recall that in mid-December, I sent a letter to the Insurance Commissioner's Office urging approval of TDI's proposed rules for ACA navigators. In that letter, I expressed concern over several issues, mainly the insufficient vetting and training required to become a navigator under the federal rules. As has been stated today, insurance is indeed complicated, and to expect a non-insurance person to get up to speed on the complications of not only insurance but of ACA in the 20 to 30 hours required by the federal law is just insufficient. I don't have any problem with the 40 hours in addition to that. We know that navigators, in an effort to sign people up for ACA, are entrusted with Americans' personal information, yet federal law and regulations do almost nothing to protect people from potential fraud and abuse committed by navigators. I also pointed out in my letter that the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Oversight and Government Reform found that poorly-trained navigators gave consumers incorrect information about health care exchanges, they violated the Health and Human Service rules and procedures, and in some cases even encouraged applicants to commit tax fraud. Indeed, HHS Secretary Kathleen Sebelius herself has admitted that a convicted felon could serve as a navigator because background checks are not required. We also know that in Texas, the navigators have been caught encouraging people to lie about their income levels and medical histories in order to pay cheaper premiums for their insurance plans. And I'll just note that under ACA, a smoker is liable to pay as much as three to four times more than a nonsmoker, and I have heard reports of navigators encouraging people to lie and say they are not smokers in order to get a better prize. No background checks, giving people false information about the exchanges, encouraging tax fraud, encouraging applicants not to tell the truth, are these really the kind of people that ought to be allowed to be involved with other people's insurance? And I don't think anyone in here thinks so. In Texas, we're about solutions. When the legislature passed Senator Watson's SB 1795 during the most recent legislative session, we empowered TDI to create rules for navigators in addition to the federal regulations, which I believe are lacking. It is imperative that Texas adopt stringent rules for navigators to ensure that the privacy of applicants is protected and the applications are completely accurate. The proposed rules are not overly burdensome or far-reaching, but simply ensure that navigators are properly vetted and properly trained, and I encourage you to adopt these rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Jessica Schleifer on behalf of Senator Ellis. Can find you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and members of TDI. My name is Jessica Schleifer, and I'm here representing Senator Rodney Ellis's office. The senator had previously submitted comments along with his colleagues to Commissioner Rathgaber, but also wanted Rathgaber, but also wanted to submit additional testimony into the record, so I apologize for reading. Senator Ellis asked that I read the letter. Dear Commissioner Rathgaber, I understand that the Texas Department of Insurance is moving forward with proposed rules to implement additional restrictions and requirements for navigators. While I share your concern for the need to protect Texas consumers' privacy and data, these proposed rules go well beyond the requirements of those doing similar work and singles out navigators. These proposed rules would impose excessive fees and unnecessary training requirements and put in place restrictions that will prevent navigators from completing their core responsibility of providing consumers with the information they need to make informed decisions about what health plans will be best for them. These proposed rules go past protection and will hinder Texans from receiving assistance and information about healthcare options available to them. As you know, Texas has the highest uninsured rate in the nation and stands to benefit greatly from the implementation of the Affordable Care Act. One of the key components of the law is implementation of a healthcare marketplace a resource for individuals to shop for and compare quality affordable health insurance. For vulnerable populations and underserved populations, navigators are a critical source for enrollment assistance. They are trusted resources for information in their communities and are able to use this connection to inform consumers about health insurance and financial assistance options available through the marketplace. Furthermore, navigators are only one entity assisting consumers with enrolling and plans. Insurance agents and health insurance companies are also helping with enrollment and are exposed to the same private personal data as navigators. They collect or have access to confidential information, including birth dates, social security numbers, and financial information. While navigators are helping consumers enroll with this information, insurance agents and health insurance companies also have the ability to maintain files with this private personal data. However, health insurance agents and health insurance companies were specifically excluded from the rulemaking authority in SB 1795, but the need for insurance agents and health insurance companies to be conscientious and accountable when accessing this confidential information still remains. If the impotence for implementing these new rules is truly about protecting consumers and their privacy, then why doesn't TDI seek to place the same restrictions and requirements on all entities that gain access to and maintain files with private personal information necessary for health insurance enrollment? Also, if ensuring all of those that have access to such information is a legitimate concern, why have similar restrictions not been proposed in the past? As written, TDI should not implement the proposed navigator rules, but if these proposed restrictions and training requirements are imposed on navigators, TDI should take steps to implement rules to ensure that personal private data is not only protected and secure when in the hands of nonprofit and community organizations, but also when in the hands of those who benefit financially from helping consumers like insurance agents and health insurance companies. Thank you in advance for my comments, and I look forward to working with you to continue to ensure consumers are protected and that those who need it have access to affordable healthcare.
Thank you very much. Next up is Connor Kenny on behalf of Representative Burnham.
Hello, thank you. My name is Connor Kenny. I represent Representative Burnham, who is actually up in Fort Worth today canvassing his district to promote his Affordable Care Act workshops to get his constituents signed up. So I'll just read his comments for the record. "I am most -- or I write to you today to submit formal comments on the Texas Department of Insurance's proposed new rules concerning regulation of navigators for health benefit exchanges. I am most concerned with the hour requirement for training of navigators in the proposed rule. The authorizing legislation for the rule, Senate Bill 1795, specifically states that any regulation should, quote, 'ensure that Texans are able to find and apply for affordable healthcare coverage under any federally-run health benefit exchange while helping consumers in the state.' This creates a dual charge for TDI to both protect Texas customers while also ensuring their access to navigators that will help them apply for health coverage. The 40 hours of required training you propose are overly burdensome and costly, which will unnecessarily take up the resources and time of navigator organizations, most of which are nonprofit, community-based organizations, or local government organizations, at the critical moment of the close of the first open enrollment period of the Affordable Care Act. The regulations could take effect in early March or late February, while the open enrollment period ends March 31. TDI itself estimates that the training will cost up to $800 per individual navigator. This jeopardizes the ability of citizens to access navigators when they need them most. I find it greatly disturbing that TDI has made no attempt to detail or justify why 40 hours of training are required, despite your agency's own internal review showing that no other state currently requires that level of training. While TDI has pointed out that insurance adjusters also require 40 hours of training, TDI made this point after the 40-hour requirement was proposed and has not tried to explain why that 40-hour requirement demonstrated why navigators should undergo 40 hours of training. You recently replied to an open records request I filed asking for, quote, 'any documents relating to the determination of the overall 40-hour training requirement and the 13-hour requirement for Texas-specific Medicaid provisions, the 13 hours of applicable privacy requirements, and the 14 hours of ethics training.' In response, TDI was unwilling or unable to provide any documentation I could release to the public showing how the hour requirements were arrived at or any stakeholder or any citizen asking for these hours. The two citizen complaints you made available to my office made no mention of concerns of adequate training, nor did these citizens mention any experience with navigators beyond what they had seen on political Internet websites. TDI has provided me documents that the agency refuses to let me release to the public that indeed indicate that the hour requirement was arrived upon first with a justification developed later. Further, these documents indicate that the decision to require 40 hours of training was actually due to political influence with no proper consideration of circumstances or foundation in substantial evidence. I once again call upon TDI to allow me to release these documents so that our citizens may see how government employees at this taxpayer-funded agency have arrived at the regulations that will be imposed upon the public. The lack of any rational basis for the determination of the hour requirements, combined with the apparent political influence from officials who have publicly dedicated themselves to obstruct the implementation of the Affordable Care Act, makes these training requirements the very definition of arbitrary, unsupported by substantial evidence, and overly burdensome. As such, I demand that TDI revise this rule to require only the hours of training justified by a specific curriculum. Otherwise, I do not think they would survive in either state court or the court of public opinion. Sincerely, say, Representative Lonburnham. Thank you."
Next is Robert McVeigh from Representative Ginn's office.
I'm Robert McVeigh with Representative Ryan Ginn's office. The representative wanted to be here this morning, but he couldn't make it. He told me to listen to the comments, and I think the senators and the representatives have covered most of what his concerns are very well. He asked me to make a few additional comments. Those are that he was proud to, you know, carry this bill in the House. His goal is to protect people who need help, and we deal with a lot of people in his office that need a lot of help. We have people, right now, we're helping who are dying, who have no insurance. We help them every week. They have cancer, they have kidney disease, they have a number of problems. We try to find some kind of healthcare when there is no healthcare for them because no one will pay for it. The representative is hopeful these navigators can help people get the insurance they need. He also wants to make sure that the people who need that insurance are safe from being ripped off. That was why he passed the bill, and he hopes that those rules will not keep the services from being offered because people in our district badly need it. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to public comments. Again, if you wish to speak, please fill out a card and submit it to the Deputy Chief Clerk. Is there anybody else from a legislative office that wishes to speak? I believe we've done that. Martha Spinks. Are you ready?
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Dr. Martha Spinks, the Director of Bayer Area Agency on Aging, a department of the Alamo Area Council of Governments, which is headquartered in San Antonio. Our agency is one of several partners who applied for a navigator grant as a collaborative partner of United Way of Tarrant County, the lead agency for the grant that we received from Health and Human Services. I provide oversight to the navigator program in 11 counties. A colleague of mine in ACOG provides oversight for another 12 counties. With the grant from Health and Human Services, we have trained and certified 16 navigators for the 11 counties that I'm responsible for. We were extremely selective in the applicants we chose. They had to have at least an associate's degree, and all but one have bachelor's or master's degrees. They had to have some prior experience in human services such as Medicare, Medicaid, CHIP, Social Security, the state health insurance program, or other social welfare programs. Before they were hired, they had to pass a criminal background check, and they had to document their citizenship or immigration status. Before they had any contact with consumers, they had to do the following. They had to be issued a special code from our agency that allowed them access to navigator training, which took about 30 hours to complete. As they worked through the training, they took several exams in order to proceed to the next section of the training. On passing the final exam, the navigators were notified that they had passed or failed, and that while they received notice online of successful completion, actual certification would be processed through the lead agency and the host agency. Then, they had to complete two hours of HIPAA training to assure that they understood requirements for confidentiality in protecting medical and personal information. Then, they completed an orientation to our Area Agency on Aging, so they would be familiar with referral resources for additional non-navigator assistance. The HHS navigator training placed a great deal of emphasis on confidentiality and the requirement for navigators to be unbiased and non-directive in their interactions with consumers. Our navigators have professional liability coverage from their employer. I'm pleased to report to you that the 16 navigators that are implementing our program have performed magnificently since October, working hundreds of hours and driving hundreds of miles to rural areas as well as urban areas to be sure that every Texan in our region has the opportunity to learn about the Affordable Care Act and how they may benefit. Our agency is in an excellent position to recruit and train these navigators because we, like other Area Agencies on Aging, have a long history of providing Medicare benefits counseling through a grant from CMS Health Information Counseling and Advocacy Program, otherwise known as HiCap. HiCap has been operating in Texas since 1992 and is comprised of partnerships of DADS, TDI, the Texas Legal Services Center, the Local and Regional Area Agencies on Aging, and the Texas Medical Foundation. Through our years of experience assisting Medicare enrollees, we have a very clear understanding of what an effective health insurance enrollment program requires. Based on that experience, I can say that our navigators and the navigators who share the same grant with us are well-trained and performing well as they enroll consumers in the health insurance exchange. I am concerned that TDI's proposed regulation of navigators for health benefit exchanges creates some unnecessary obstacles. I encourage TDI to consider amending the following proposed rules. Having firsthand knowledge of the rigorous 30 hours of training that our navigators underwent, as well as the training for our Medicare benefits counselors that we have been doing for many years, I am skeptical that there is sufficient content for an additional 40 hours of information through state training for navigators. The Health and Human Services Commission offers a navigator training program for community groups that help people enroll in Medicaid, CHIP, and other programs through the Community Partner Program. The course is four hours long, which would seem adequate additional training for navigators if it is sufficient for these other programs, which are very similar. Billing each navigator as much as $800 for the training when the Community Partner Program training is available for free from the state is perplexing. Why would the navigator program be treated differently from other similar programs in Texas? I encourage TDI to allow for the use of existing free training programs to meet the navigator training requirements. Moreover, I urge TDI to take into account that funding spent for this training subtracts from the grant funding that can be used to provide more navigators to assist consumers in this huge task. I am especially concerned that this proposed training is scheduled to be completed by March 1, just 30 days before the end of open enrollment. We can reasonably anticipate that demand toward the end of the enrollment period will be particularly high and not a good time to degrade the number of navigators who are available. If I thought that navigators were insufficiently trained for the task at hand, I would be more concerned about additional training at this point in time. But my experience is that the navigators are well-trained, and with several months' experience as navigators behind them now, they need to be allowed to employ that expertise to help our fellow Texans apply for this vital benefit. Our partners in this grant that we receive from Health and Human Services are like us. They're established human services organizations with sterling reputations, dedicated to ethical and competent client service, and experienced in health benefits counseling. In view of the credentials of these agencies and their navigators, I recommend that if TDI wishes to modify training for other or other requirements, that those changes take place after March 31 and the close of open enrollment. This will assure that every Texan has the maximum opportunity to learn about the Affordable Care Act, and it will also allow an orderly transition to TDI's additional standards. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Janice Reinken. Hi. From Representative Bree Jones McLendon's office.
Good morning, Commissioner Rathgaber and others assembled here this morning. Representative McLendon had a death in the family and was not able to attend this morning, so I will not elaborate on what her letter says, but for the record, she would like for me to read her letter, addressed to you, Ms. Rathgaber, as the Commissioner. "This comment letter is meant to supplement the comments in the letter I submitted for the record regarding the rulemaking hearing held by the department on December 20. In addition, some specific concerns are listed on the next page. I appreciate the effort the department is making to hold two public hearings and receive input from stakeholder groups, individuals, elected officials, and others. As you know, I am not an attorney, but I believe I understand sufficiently the import and effect of the rules as written. Right now, the push to adopt registration rules for the ACA navigators is doing more to scare the public than to inform the people who need affordable health insurance. In addition, it is creating confusion for the navigators and for healthcare organizations that serve indigent citizens in Texas. Whether that is by design or just by circumstance, the effect is the same. This effort to protect the uninsured citizens in Texas is creating roadblocks for millions of people who need health insurance. While I agree that the department has a proper role in protecting consumers from unscrupulous or fraudulent actions by certified CMS navigators or persons who would pose falsely as navigators, I am troubled at this point that the rules as written go well beyond that goal. They are too broad and too vague to give notice of who is being regulated or how to verify with the department who is or is not authorized by CMS or registered with TDI to assist with Affordable Care Act insurance enrollment. The rules are unacceptably vague. Unacceptably vague as written, TDI needs to clarify for its own purposes and for public transparency that its mission and its scope of authority apply only to a small set of registration applicants. That list would include grant-funded organizational navigators, their sub-grantees, and a small number of individuals who report to them and are certified by CMS to assist the public with enrollment under the Affordable Care Act. All told, that number is probably fewer than 500 in Texas. As written and as potentially applied, the scope of the rules could adversely affect persons and groups that do not aim to serve as certified navigators working to provide enrollment services and do not hold themselves out as CMS-certified navigators. That could include hospitals, pharmacies, faith-based organizations, social workers, and others who come into direct contact with some of the state's 6 million uninsured persons. It concerns me that you're It concerns me that your rules could negatively impact non-navigator organizations in Bexar County, such as University Health System, Christus Santa Rosa, and Methodist Healthcare Ministries, as well as nonprofit 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(4) social service entities. If the rules are adopted as written, TDI will potentially launch Texas headlong into protracted, unnecessary, and expensive litigation, and that cost will be passed on to the taxpayers. Surely, there is a better way to protect and serve the best interests of the people. I urge you to take a clearer and more manageable approach to these rules and revise them with these thoughts in mind. And now the supplemental comments enumerated on her second page. Number one, the rules do not make clear what individuals and what entities will be subject to the rules. Only a small number of entities and individuals should be encompassed by the proposed rules, which would include the grant-funded navigator organizations, their sub-grantees, and individual navigators, who are agents, servants, or employees of these organizations, and who have an individual CMS certificate with an identifiable CMS authorization number. As written, the rules are impermissibly broad, potentially regulating individuals and organizations that aim to help the public with educational outreach efforts, but do not actually work with individuals directly with the insurance enrollment process in the Affordable Care Act marketplace. Number two, the rules are unacceptably vague as written. TDI needs to clarify for its own purposes and for public transparency that its mission and scope of authority concern only the organizational navigators who are grant recipients authorized to assist the public with enrollment under the Affordable Care Act, their sub-grantees, and those individual navigators designated as agents, servants, or employees of these grant recipient navigator organizations. Number three, if the rules are adopted as written, TDI will be engaged in mission creep. Texas law authorizes the department to register the navigators, not to license them. The rules would impose licensure requirements on ACA navigators, although they are not hired by insurance companies. The proposed requirements are modeled on those for insurance loss adjusters, but comparisons made between licensed insurance adjusters and navigating navigators are misdirected. An adjuster licensed by TDI works for the commercial benefit of the insurer. Their job is to minimize the loss ultimately paid by the insurer, and their duties stem from their role as a servant of the insurer that has an insured customer who has suffered a covered loss. The ACA navigators are not authorized to give allegiance to any commercial enterprise and must remain neutral when assisting citizens who seek to obtain health coverage through the ACA marketplace. By providing this service to the public, the navigators provide a public service and generate no financial gain for the navigator organizations or for themselves. A more appropriate model for TDI registration procedures would be the Medicaid counselors who serve the Department of State Health Services. The fact that TDI has a licensing procedure in place for insurance loss adjusters and currently contracts with a vendor to conduct the training and testing for them is not a valid basis for imposing similar requirements on ACA navigators through the registration process. The registration rules should not be allowed to serve as a vehicle for a vendor to profit from navigators providing grant-funded services for a public purpose. Number four, SB 1795 did not grant legislative authority to TDI to redefine who is or who is not a navigator. The rules as written create a much broader definition and would apply to a much longer list of organizations and individuals than the federal law or state law have specified. The federal definition adopted in state law requires navigators to perform all of a composite list of requirements, but the TDI rules would broaden that net to include any organization or entity performing any one or more of those requirements. Number five, TDI's mission should not and cannot be to attempt to throttle public inquiry or limit the sharing of information about the law, the ACA marketplace, or freedom of speech, or of the press. As written, the rules would regulate organizations and individuals who are not enrollment navigators and not acting nor promoting or identify themselves as such. To attempt to regulate them would be an unconstitutional restraint on non-navigator organizations and individuals who do not seek to be or need to be registered as such under SB 1795. That would defy the legislative intent of SB 1795. Thank you for your time, and I know that Representative McLendon appreciates your sincere consideration of her comments.
Thank you, and please extend her condolences to her.
Thank you.
Next is Claude Andrews.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Claude Andrews. I am a former director of the area agency on aging for forty-two years. We cover ten thousand twenty-two square miles in East Texas. I am thoroughly familiar with the problems of our seniors and our vulnerable population, and I just respectfully request a simple solution to this problem. And that solution would be that you suspend all rules other than those federal rules already required to allow ample time for enrollment of these people into the healthcare insured program. While I'm definitely impressed with the sudden interest of the insurance commissioner on a vulnerable and uninsured population, I'm really concerned about the rules that will hamper the orderly and expeditiously implementation of this program for our vulnerable seniors. So just in short, I ask that you suspend all rules that you propose and allow the rules of the current federal regulations to be implemented to expedite this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Benjamin Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Hernandez. I'm a deputy assistant director with the City of Houston Health Department, and I first want to say thank you very much for allowing this second opportunity for comment. I understand there's a lot of concern around the state in particular with navigator agencies on these proposed rules, and having the second meeting is actually a good opportunity to provide comment. At the City of Houston Health Department, we're particularly concerned with the proposed rules, because we have experience working with vulnerable populations, and in particular, when we looked at these rules and we looked at the certified benefit counselors, we would like to ask TDI to compare the oversight that it's proposing to the certified benefit counselors, since the duties for these positions are comparable and neither is selling a product. The organizations and individuals working as certified benefit counselors have decades of experience working with the most vulnerable populations, and when I say vulnerable, I mean the aging and in greatest economic need. And they provide assistance to government benefits programs such as Social Security, supplemental security income, Medicaid, Medicare, the SNAP program, and veterans' benefits. More specifically, when you look at the training requirements for CBCs, it consists of twenty to twenty-five hours of free classroom training and also the passing of a final exam. And although criminal background checks are conducted for all CBCs, fingerprinting is not a requirement. Finally, it's our understanding that CBCs register with TDI and that there is no fee attached to that registration. We strongly believe that if TDI issues certificates, maintains and regularly updates the records of CBCs working with the most vulnerable populations on such a broad array of government programs as I just listed, and it does so requiring only twenty-five hours of training, then it should do the same or no more for federal insurance navigators working on a much more limited scope. As the way we look at it, the rules offer no additional value, and we implore TDI to use a process that is already developed and embraced statewide for CBCs. Of particular concern to the City of Houston Health Department are the following concerns: The registration and renewal fees. The initial registration, fifty dollars per navigator and fifty dollars per navigator grant recipient is excessive for organizations with limited resources. As we know, the grant funds have already been awarded, and this was not contemplated in this or the training fees were not contemplated in the grant award. Also, the fingerprinting requirements proposed indicate that the cost for fingerprinting is estimated to be between forty-one dollars and sixty-two dollars. Again, this cost was not budgeted in the grant fund received, and organizations would have to set aside resources to fulfill a requirement that does not provide much more benefit than criminal background checks that the navigators here in Texas are required to have. And as I was sitting listening to the comments, I can see that the organizations here in Texas have set a minimum bar, that is, background checks for the navigators, and although the federal law as it was written doesn't provide for or require the background checks, the minimum that has been done here in Texas are those background checks, but not the fingerprinting requirement, which we believe is excessive. When you do a criminal background check, felonies and other criminal history comes to light. And the reason why I say that is because if organizations have already done criminal background checks on individuals, they would have to go back and incur an additional expense to do the fingerprinting requirement, which again does not provide any additional benefit to the criminal background checks. Also, the training requirements, we consider the forty-eight hours of education under the proposed rule at an expense ranging from two hundred to eight hundred dollars for the initial registration, and six hours of continuing education at sixty dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars as excessive and unnecessary. As I mentioned before, certified benefits counselors receive twenty-five training hours, and that includes training on Texas Medicaid, confidentiality, and privacy training, as well as training on numerous other government benefit programs. Therefore, it seems unreasonable that TDI's proposed rules for federal navigators include forty-hour training that focuses specifically and only on Texas Medicaid, privacy, and ethics. What I'm saying is, look, an existing program, CBC certified benefit counselors, already cover this program, and the training is much less, and it covers not only Texas Medicaid and privacy, but it also covers a whole host of other government programs. So when you look at the forty hours for the navigators that are being proposed, we see that as excessive, and urge TDI to revise that training requirement. And finally, as a government agency, the Health Department for the City of Houston is self-insured, and therefore can present proof of financial responsibility without the necessity for posting an surety bond or purchasing other liability insurance. And we see the three options given in the rules for evidence of professional responsibility, financial responsibility don't really apply to government organizations, so we urge TDI just to very easily amend those, either to exempt government organizations, much like the state of Texas, which is self-insured, exempt government organizations, or provide a way for them to post their self-insurance. So we appreciate the invitation and the opportunity really to give comment at this hearing, and we urge TDI again to listen to the concerns of the agencies around the state working with navigators. And finally, I heard Senator Sylvia Garcia speak earlier, and you know, it occurred to me that we have navigators for many other services, and one of the points that she was making is that the proposed rules as stated really define and limit who can use the term navigator. Well, if that's the case, then we would have to go back and register a whole bunch of people that we use as navigators in the Health Department. This is something that's not unique to us as a Health Department. It's unique to many public health agencies around the state, so we ask also for due consideration to revising the rules. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Clayton Travis. I'm the Mental Health Policy Fellow for Texans Care for Children. I appreciate you allowing this second hearing for comments today. Texans Care for Children is a nonprofit organization that works solely to improve outcomes for Texas children through policy change. I have a couple of comments about the proposed rule, and specifically some comments about why this proposed rule specifically affects Texas families and Texas children. First, the clear legislative intent as outlined by the author of Senate Bill 1795 is to provide additional regulation of navigators as defined by the Affordable Care Act, only where federal regulation is lacking. The proposed rule defines navigators too broadly and catches many essential community educators and the general public within its reach. While many groups, such as certified application counselors and those regulated by other state or federal departments are intentionally carved out, which we appreciate, groups providing public education, anyone using the term navigator, a friend or family member providing assistance to a consumer are all not carved out. There is no need to have these entities regulated and registered by the Texas Department of Insurance. In addition to the proposed rule being too broad, the regulations put in place to ensure consumer protection are too burdensome and will unnecessarily decrease the effectiveness of navigator organizations across the state. While TDI has determined that the twenty to thirty hours of federal navigator training lacks in education on Texas Medicaid, ethics, and privacy protections, forty hours of additional training on these topics seems excessive. Furthermore, the costs associated with the additional training are unnecessary when two of these three topics are available in free state training modules in the Community Partner Program within the Health and Human Services Commission here in Texas. Using additional federal tax dollars to duplicate these training materials is just wasteful. The requirement for navigator entities to hold surety bonds is also concerning. It violates the spirit of federal regulations which prohibit states from requiring errors and omissions insurance of navigators. This will undoubtedly place additional financial barriers on navigator organizations that are all funded by static federal grants, perhaps limiting the amount of staff that can be hired to serve families seeking health insurance. Finally, the requirement that navigator entities are prohibited from providing advice to families regarding substantive and comparative benefits is problematic. While it is important that navigators are not recommending or steering families towards specific plans, it is important that navigators are able to show differences between benefit summaries, cost sharing, and overall pricing. As has been said before, insurance is complicated. Individuals may need help. The uninsured population that the marketplace is serving traditionally has minimal knowledge of insurance products and could benefit from this basic education and comparison help in order to make informed decisions. More specifically, consumers with specific health needs, such as those with mental illness or disabilities, may have more nuanced questions and concerns about policy benefits from plan to plan. Prohibiting navigators from performing this critical duty is counter to their purpose. Finally, without changes to the proposed rule, there will effectively decrease the likelihood families will find affordable health coverage. It is important that the proposed rule undergo substantial revisions before it's published. Without doing so, it may jeopardize the opportunity for Texas families to receive navigator services. Texas is already the national leader in the rate of uninsured adults and the number of uninsured children. Here, more than anywhere else in the country, navigators have a huge task ahead of them. The last thing the state needs to be doing is placing unnecessary regulation on individuals trying to alleviate this problem. Furthermore, Texas has one of the highest rates of children who are eligible but unenrolled in Medicaid or the Children's Health Insurance Program. In other words, many families simply don't know about their eligibility for these programs, or they need help applying for them. Working with a federally-funded ACA navigator is another great medium for families to find out about the health coverage options available for their children, and apply for all the family's coverage options at once. Texans Care for Children supports making our consumer protections regulations actually protect families while also not decreasing their likelihood to find coverage. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Next is Kit Abney Spels.
Good morning. My name is Kit Abney Spels, and I am the Director of InsureKid, a member of the Seton Healthcare Family. InsureKid has been providing application assistance to central Texas families since 1999. Over the years, we have helped tens of thousands of individuals enroll in health insurance coverage provided by CHIP, CHIP Perinate, and Medicaid. I would like to thank TDI for the opportunity to provide comment on the proposed regulations for navigators of health benefit exchanges. While I understand and respect TDI's desire to protect consumers, I am concerned the current proposed regulations are overreaching in nature and could have unintended consequences. In its introduction of the regulations, TDI wrote, "The intent of SB 1795 is to provide consumer protection by requiring that navigators, as established by the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, have the training necessary to advise, guide, the public through the process of finding the most appropriate health insurance options available to them. Additionally, the purpose of the law is to provide a state solution to ensure that Texans are able to find and apply for affordable health coverage under any federally-run health benefit exchange while helping consumers in the state." Despite this statement, TDI has defined navigator in very broad terms that encompass a wide variety of individuals and agencies. InsureKid for years has encouraged and trained schools, social service agencies, and faith institutions to educate their students, clients, and parishioners on CHIP, Medicaid, and the application process. These entities- These entities rarely assist families with completing the CHIP/Medicaid application, but instead provide an important role in educating families on how they can access insurance, the potential cost and the basics on how it works. The rules proposed by TDI would require that entities providing this type of education register as a navigator and complete the costly and time-intensive training set forth in the regulations. I would hope it is not TDI's intent to prohibit or discourage trusted and respected organizations like schools and churches from providing families factual, unbiased information. InsureKid as a provider of CHIP and Medicaid application assistance would fall into TDI's navigator category. Our organization does not assist people with applying for coverage on the health exchange. Therefore, we have not completed the certified application training. But we do complete applications that if ineligible for CHIP or Medicaid would be sent to the exchange. We are not a HHSC community partner because hospitals that pay to have HHSC outstation eligibility staff onsite can't use the Your Texas Benefits website to submit applications. Those applications are routed via ZIP codes. Therefore, our applications through the hospital would not be received by the appropriate staff. All of our employees do undergo background checks and complete HIPAA training yearly. If required, we would comply with the TDI rules, but it would cause additional cost and management. The regulations, as I read them, would also prevent friends, families and neighbors from talking about their experiences on how they have accessed coverage, the plan they chose and why. I am not sure how TDI would regulate this activity, but it is unsettling to think that family members talking about how to enroll in health insurance would be illegal in the future. I ask that TDI rethink its definition of navigator and to return to the intent of the law defining navigator as established by ACA. The proposed regulations require navigators as defined by TDI to complete an extensive training and continuing education program at the cost of the organization or individual. Although I understand the intent, the financial costs and time needed to complete the training will deter reputable organizations from providing assistance to families. As many have stated, the HHSC Community Partner Program has developed excellent web-based training modules on CHIP, Medicaid and the health insurance marketplace. Instead of working with private vendors, TDI could require organizations providing application assistance complete the HHSC Community Partner Program modules at no cost to organizations. I ask that TDI reassess the training requirements and to provide no-cost options to ACA navigator organizations in order to meet the required training. Lastly, the regulations propose to prohibit anyone who provides navigator services other than application assisters who register with TDI from using the term navigator in a title, organizational name or website. Prohibiting entities to use the word navigator or navigation to describe its services seems extreme and beyond the authority of TDI. Patient navigation has been in existence long before ACA was written. The current HHSC 1115 waiver to reform the Patient Delivery System, DISRIP, lists patient navigations as one of its eligible projects. We at Seton currently employ cancer navigators, OB navigators and chronic disease navigators, which would then have to comply with all the rules set forth in this regulation. I ask that TDI reevaluate the limitations it poses to set on the use of the word navigator. Lastly, health insurance improves access to healthcare and brings a peace of mind. For individuals that can get employer-sponsored insurance, getting coverage is easy. But for many poor and vulnerable families, they have to get coverage on their own, and many are overwhelmed by the process and go uninsured. Those that do seek coverage often have a friend, family member or trusted organization like ours help them to complete the application process. I encourage TDI to be mindful not to create barriers that will discourage the honest individuals and organizations from helping these individuals. Thank you for your time.
Next is Judson Robinson.
Good morning, Commissioner. Just wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to discuss this matter once more. The Urban League, like many organizations in the community, have been in business for a number of years. We've been in business for 45 years in Houston in an attempt to try to educate and inform communities about information that will be helpful to them and their families to be more self-sustaining. That has taken a great deal of time to generate that degree of trust with people in the community. And I think that the intent of the entire program was to make sure that you had opportunities for organizations like ours and many others to be in a position to help guide folks through the process of something that's completely unfamiliar to them. The whole healthcare navigation process is one that's not very simple. We've gone through the necessary training to make sure that people are capable of making the kind of advice available to people so they can make the kind of informed decisions that will give them a degree of comfort as they move forward in this process. I think the process is going to work fine. I think it's been working okay, and that in the future, if the rules are not changed, that it will continue to be the kind of program that was intended to be, something that allows community citizens, people in the community to be involved with their constituents that they already serve in a number of other areas. Our agency works in the area of education, workforce development, housing, health. So this is just a normal additional avenue for them to receive information from folks that they typically work with on a regular basis already. So I would hope that there's no additional fees. That would be considered as being appropriate. I would hope that we're not looking at a March 31st timeline to do the additional training, although some additional training may be necessary, but again, tweaking with our people and other community-based organizations, the 30 hours was more than enough time for people to become comfortable with the rules needed to be in place for them to help folks who are in need. So, Commissioner, we're here taking our time to come and talk with you about these things which we think are detrimental to the overall program. We hope that you will consider these comments. I especially want to thank Senator Garcia. She really, I think, explained it very well in terms of what the changes and the impact the changes would have on the broader community. I think we have a program in place that is working. Maybe with a tweak or two it could work better, but certainly not to be overbearing with some of the proposed rules and rule changes that have been recommended by the Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Counselor. Thank you for the time again to speak with you. I wanted to just reiterate some comments that I had made on the 20th, and not to duplicate those, but actually to make a little bit of a different comment. So I acknowledge again your challenge in balancing the appropriate protection of confidential information and ensuring the qualifications of individuals while meeting Senate Bill 1795 to help consumers in the state. So just to use something that's already been stated this morning, you are bearing the Goldilocks burden, and we appreciate the position that puts you in, in a lot of different ways and a lot of different pressures. So I appreciate your work and effort in that regard, holding a second hearing and listening to everyone with open mind and the patience that you have been. The three comments that I made last time, and I represent the Teaching Hospitals of Texas, I'm the President and CEO for that organization. Three comments from last time, just to summarize those, are to recommend that the definition of navigator be more narrowly defined. One option to consider is as an ACA navigator, within the rule, defining it that way could provide that limitation for you. Two, to ensure enforcement for bad actors, so a lot of the concern has been some bad actors. So ensuring enforcement for bad actors to address individual performance or fraud issues rather than requiring excessive costly training for everybody with the net effect potentially of limiting understanding and access to information about healthcare. Third, the cost timelines and the amount of training required by the proposed rule may run contrary to Senate Bill 1795. So as a recommendation, we'd recommend looking into the Medicaid/CHIP navigators through the Community Partnership Programs and that training and approach. The additional point I'd like to make today is to highlight a financial argument. Our association, Teaching Hospitals of Texas, represents local taxing entities that use taxpayer dollars to provide information about and access to healthcare, University of Texas Health Science Centers that use state-appropriate general revenue for the same goals, and several nonprofit health systems that are affiliated with these local entities. Our members all share a mission that includes ensuring access to care for all Texans with a special focus on vulnerable populations. Many individuals in the healthcare delivery system assist the uninsured and the underinsured in understanding healthcare, how to access it and the benefits of various coverage programs. We believe that these services actually improve the efficiency and the effectiveness of healthcare by getting people into care sooner and providing education on best use of healthcare, thus saving healthcare costs and increasing health in Texas. We actually see this in our many indigent healthcare programs that our members operate throughout the state. So just in summary, too broadly defining navigators could limit this information about appropriate access to coverage and could have a direct financial impact on local communities and state taxpayers. Our members, like others in the system, support the outreach and understanding of healthcare and how to best access it. They also fund direct services for healthcare for Texans who couldn't otherwise afford it, the vulnerable population. So again, the three recommendations, consider using Medicaid and CHIP requirements, consider including ACA navigator, ensure enforcement, and then to keep in mind as you're doing the balancing of all the competing demands on you, that this financial impact to local taxpayers and state taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Joshua Houston.
Hi, my name is Joshua Houston. I'm General Counsel to Texas Impact. Health insurance is a vital part of people having access to healthcare and so that their families do not face financial ruin when their loved one falls ill. That's why we have long been supportive of the consumer protections in Senate Bill 1795. Consumer protections are vital in order for people to have confidence that they will be protected from malfeasance when they go to sign up for health insurance. Because those consumer protections are so important for people obtaining coverage, we want to see any rule that should be adopted to remain in effect to protect the consumer. We are concerned that the rule as it is currently proposed could suffer both potentially from substantive and constitutional challenges as to its validity. We greatly hope, let me emphasize that we greatly hope that this can be avoided. A challenge to the rule not only puts many important consumer protections at risk, but also leads to increased publicity, consumer confusion and an overall decrease in consumer confidence, which may lead to fewer people obtaining the health coverage that they need. The most serious legal claim we think against the rule comes from the definition, the applicability and the required registration sections, what's our 19.4002 through 004. The effect is to redefine the term navigator as an activity as opposed to a designation. In other words, to use a metaphor, the proposed rule is like saying anyone who swims with scuba gear, lands on a beach and carries a firearm is a Navy SEAL. We believe that this is kind of a fundamental misunderstanding that is putting the entire rule in jeopardy. As I'm sure you are aware, an agency's authority is a question of law determined through statutory construction. One basic rule of statutory construction is that when the legislature has provided a definition for a word in a statute, then the court will use that definition. Senate Bill 1795 clearly defines that the term navigator, it is those that are described under 42 U.S.C. 18031, which defines a navigator as a federal grant recipient that must perform certain duties. It is a very narrow definition. Any redefinition of navigator risks the rule no longer being in harmony with the general objectives of the statute. There is a scope of practice case from 2008 called Texas Orthopedic Association versus the Texas State Board of Podiatric Medical Examiners. The state board in that case impermissibly expanded the definition of the word foot. In this case, the Austin Court of Appeals found that the board had exceeded its authority by too broadly defining the word foot to involve parts of what we would commonly call the ankle and invalidated the entire rule. Additionally, the proposed rule casts a very wide net. The definition of what constitutes a navigator service includes the use of the conjunction or, which connects the definitional elements of possible services that one could perform in order to perform navigation services. That means that providing linguistically appropriate information or establishing standards for data security make one providing a navigator service rather than requiring an entity do both. Not only is this overbroad, but we feel it is also vague. It fails to provide fair notice to a person subject to the rule and makes difficult guidance for those tasked with enforcing it. For instance, in a recently high-profile case, not to pick on them, but Target had a data security issue. Presumably, they are fixing this data security problem, establishing new standards. A corporation that size also probably has an HR department. If an HR department were to assist employees with enrollment, then under this proposed rule, they would have to register as a navigator. An additional example is if an entity were to provide enrollment services in Spanish, in other words, providing linguistically appropriate information, that could arguably subject that entity to the registration requirement should they do enrollment assistance. Third, the application section, we believe, is also vague. It is not clear who is exactly exempted under 19.4003C. To kind of walk with that provision, it is not clear what level of regulation that an entity would be under that would constitute state and federal authority. For example, both for-profits and nonprofits are governed by the Texas Business Organization Code and are regulated by the Secretary of State, the Comptroller, the Office of Attorney General, let's just to name a few. It is not clear if that would be enough authority or not in order to invoke their coverage. If it were enough authority, then the next section that is also vague is exactly what does it mean in that last clause to the extent that the entity is providing assistance consistent with that authority? It is unclear what exactly what level of inconsistency would then invoke the department's jurisdiction. Fortunately, we think that there's a simple fix, simply maintaining the definition of navigator that the legislature explicitly put into statute would fix all these problems. Sticking to the statutory definition significantly confines the world of possible plaintiffs as well. Whereas standing in an overbreadth challenge to a rule is exceptionally broad to just about any outside group, restricting the definition of navigator to the statutory definition will significantly narrow the world of people who could possibly bring an action. Additionally, it reduces the possible causes of action against the rule and takes away what we think is the most serious, which is the definition. Other claims may still exist. For instance, in other states that have passed a similar rule, conflict preemption was raised with regard to the state prohibitions on advising a consumer to a plan, whereas the federal law requires a navigator to facilitate selection of a plan. So the issue comes down to what is the difference between advising and facilitating? One suggestion that I have that would be better for both going down the road and for those being regulated is to put an explanation of what that difference is in the recent justification for the rule. Another possible preemption claim that has come up elsewhere involves a doctrine called impeding the achievement of a federal objective. There's not a bright line rule for this. These cases are usually extremely fact-specific, but one suggestion that I have that could help avoid this kind of challenge would be to push back the effective date. March is the last month for compliance with the individual mandate. It is kind of human nature to often wait until the last minute to do a thing. There are substantial training requirements which make up the equivalent of an average person's work week that would be going into effect at exactly the same time most of the people are going to try to... effect at exactly the same time most of the people are going to try to get coverage to comply with the individual mandate. Pushing it back just one month to April would probably be viewed very favorably by a court. And lastly, navigators are funded using federal tax dollars. The general rule is that it is impermissible to put a state tax on a federal activity. However, there are many exceptions. The difficulty in this lies in determining just how far removed the taxed entity is from the federal activity. Pragmatically though, the more the fee could be limited, the less anybody will probably care. We're going to be filing more detailed written comments later today. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Thank you for holding the second hearing. I know it was extremely helpful for me personally, given the holidays, and I'd like to just thank the staff for all the hard work that is going into this rule. It's been, I'm sure, very time-consuming, and it's been a pleasure to work with you, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our cards. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify or speak? Sister Dwyer, you're going to get me in trouble.
I know. The card made out.
That's okay. Go ahead. Yeah, we know how to find you.
I'm Sister J.T. Dwyer from the Seton Healthcare Family, and I just wanted to make one comment. Several of the people this morning who have asked you to extend the implementation deadline, they say to extend it so it will go to the end, March 31. Since there have been so many changes within the Affordable Care Act on deadlines, I would ask you to extend the deadline till after the marketplace closes. So the marketplace, if the administration decides to extend the deadline, which I think is highly probable, to the end of April, then you would not implement your rules until the marketplace closes. And I think that's the intent of the people who spoke, that you would implement after the marketplace closes.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Let the record reflect that all those desiring to comment today have now done so. I will issue a decision after considering the record of today's hearing as well as the December 20th hearing and any written comments received through 5:00 p.m. today. Thank you all for participating in today's hearing, and today's hearing for docket number 2759 is adjourned. Thank you.